Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our study session. The mayor should be attending telephonically. Mayor, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Great. Thank you very much. So, welcome. Counsel is here. Perhaps Councilmember Thompson will be joining us here shortly. However, we're going to go ahead and start with our first item. That'll be code compliance. And we'll follow in this order. So, code compliance, then transportation, then transit, then parks and rec, and community facilities. So, welcome, Lieutenant Russell, and your presentation.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Counsel. So, our code compliance's mission is to promote and maintain attractive and safe neighborhoods in Mesa. I think in code compliance in this last year, we've taken a little step further in continuing with our transforming neighborhoods. And we've done that in a few different ways. We've done it through our proactive community projects, which we'll talk a little bit more about in our presentation here. Our projects, we started in October. And our model that we're currently operating with as we approach May right now is a little different than what we started with. We've adapted them over the year to kind of become a little more efficient. In October, we were focused on just some going into a neighborhood and doing focused enforcement. And we've adapted that to include much more communication and involving the neighborhood in the process as much as possible. So, one of the changes that we've made in that process is our rebranding. And we've done this recently. Thank you to Councilman Heredia for making this suggestion. We did call them proactive community projects. Kind of a pretty straight name is what they are. And we wanted to rebrand them into something that people can identify more. So, we've rebranded them to our team-up-to-clean-up events. And we'll talk a little bit more about exactly how we came up with that. But this is some of our comments from some of our citizens here. I can tell you, our feedback we've received from our residents in our neighborhoods has been overwhelmingly positive. We've had hundreds and hundreds of face-to-face contacts, emails, phone calls, and I can't think of one that was negative. And going into the process, I wasn't convinced that we were, it was going to be open arms for us in the neighborhoods. Some of our biggest cheerleaders in this process have been residents who've had violations on their property. So, we have received just overwhelming support from our neighbors. Some of our team-up-to-clean-up statistics that we've had, we had nine projects that we worked between October and to date right now. Some of those projects had multiple phases to them. Some of our larger ones out in District 6 and the one in District 4, we had three or four phases to those. There was a total of almost 700 properties that we inspected. So, kind of our model, even though we went out, and this 695 properties, these are ones that were in violation. So, our current model, kind of what we do, is we send out a postcard. And our postcard, we send to the neighborhood, letting them know that, hey, we have a project that is coming up here. And the postcard lists some common violations, as well as the dates that we're going to be there. And then, we're going to have some roll-off dumpsters in the neighborhood. And one of the amazing things that we've seen since we started doing the postcards is our citizens, residents of these neighborhoods, they're abating their problems, they're correcting these problems before we even start our projects. So, it's a very cost-effective model for us to send out the postcards on that one. So, of our almost 700 properties that we had violations on, we only issued 21 citations in all of our projects. So, what that translates to is almost a 97% compliance rate. Now, I can sit here and tell you that was the code staff or our different city departments that worked these. But the bottom line is, is that is our citizens right there, taking back their neighborhoods, as one citizen referred to it as, but putting the work into those neighborhoods themselves. And that's kind of how we came up with the team-up-to-clean-up rebranding, was it's not us that's doing it. We're giving them the ability to do it, but it's those citizens in those neighborhoods that are cleaning up the properties. So, I thought the 97% compliance rate was phenomenal. The dumpsters that we use in our projects, 75 roll-off dumpsters. Vice Mayor and Counsel, I can't tell you how great of a teammate Solid Waste has been on this project. Scott Boucher and his people in Solid Waste. I can't think of one time that we called over there and said, "We've got a neighborhood project. We need more dumpsters." And they didn't give us everything that we wanted for. They bent over backwards for us. And I can sit here today and tell you that our projects would not have been successful if it wasn't for our partnership in Solid Waste. So, the amount of tonnage, over 200,000 pounds of debris we removed from the neighborhood. And even some of our projects, we were able to separate some of our scrap metal so that those could be recycled. And we could offset some of the costs by taking those over to the recycling service. We've had 225 hours of volunteer hours in our projects. Primarily, those come from our relationship with our Navy and Marine ROTC cadets at ASU, who will be out in Councilman Heredia's District, District 3, on Saturday, working a project with us. And then, our relationship with Maricopa County Adult Probation. We have over 500 hours in our code compliance staff working the projects. And this includes doing those mailings, going out and walking the neighborhood. So, when we go out and walk the neighborhood with our code officers, we will stop at every single house, even if there's no violations. We provide them information on when the roll-off dumpsters are coming. We'll provide them some list of resources they can use. But if there's no violations, we also give them a copy of our inspection report that says no violations on it. Now, the no violation properties aren't included in our total properties, our 695. But we want to make sure that those citizens know that we thank them for their properties being in compliance there. And then, we go out and redo, obviously do our re-inspections and our dumpster days, which this Saturday will be one of our dumpster days in District 3. Additionally, one of the benefits of having a sworn individual over code compliance is that code compliance jurisdiction is the private property issues. The roadway falls under the jurisdiction of the police department. So, when we're out there doing these, I have the ability to address the issues in the roadway. So, at that time, we have, in our projects, we tagged over 80 vehicles that were in the roadway that were disabled, abandoned. And of those 80-plus vehicles, we only towed two. So, once again, our citizens are doing a great job at fixing their problems on their own. These are some of our before-and-after pictures. This first one's in District 6. Primarily, you'll see, I would say, our number-one issue we deal with in our projects is vegetation. And same, I'm sure as you are aware, the alleys in our city right now, lots of vegetation. Our properties have lots of vegetation and weed growth. It's primarily due to our weather patterns that we had this year that are creating it El Nino. We've been looking to give this El Nino character a ticket, but we can't track him down.
We like him.
Yeah. The second one, this is an example of, even though the landscaping of vegetation looks great, the house needed some paint. And this resident right here actually ended up painting their entire house. Looks great. Another example from out in District 6, where they ended up painting their entire house and cleaned some things up. This was in District 5 in our Jefferson Park project right here. If you notice the picture on the left, the fence is falling down, it's being held up by other boards. We actually got the landlord, the property owner in this case, to put in a whole new fence. And probably one of our best examples of a before-and-after, this was one of our first projects that we worked in District 4. As you can see on the left, there's probably four or five different violations on the property. This was a rental property. My favorite violation is the yellow rental bike in the middle of the front yard. And then, an amazing photo afterwards that the property owners ended up selling on this one. They put money into their rental property and then selling it to a citizen. Any questions on our projects in particular before I continue on with the illegal dumping?
Yes, one.
Lieutenant Reynolds, thank you so much for your great job. What do you do with, we have a lot of pockets of county islands, which many of those properties are dilapidated. And I know Councilmember Thompson as well. What do you do? Do you work with the county to try to mitigate some of those issues? Or what plans do you have? Or what's the process?
Vice Mayor, Councilman Luna, thank you for asking the question. We do. And it is a unique challenge for District 5 and 6 because you do have the county islands there. And they don't have the same standards that we do in the City of Mesa. But we do have relationships with our county code compliance. I'd like to tell you, they're as attentive as we are, but that isn't always the case. But we do have contacts with them. If we get citizens that call in from these county islands areas, we can actually forward emails over to them. We have direct contacts that we provide the citizens for the code compliance officers from the county areas. So, we do have those relationships and contacts for our citizens. Our illegal dumping, our illegal dumping problem has become fairly significant in the city. And as a code, from a code compliance perspective, we just necessarily don't have the resources. We don't have the ability to go clean them up. And we have a relationship with our Transportation Department on this, and it's great. Transportation's been wonderful and attentive to us when we call and request cleanups in the right-of-way. But because the problem has become a little more intense, we'll call it, around the city, we do have a pilot program that, I'll let Transportation go into a little more detail on that during their presentation. But from a code compliance perspective, what our role is going to be is we will identify, investigate, track those illegal dumping cases, primarily in the right-of-way. And we are going to do everything in our power on our side to investigate and hold property owners accountable who are allowing the illegal dumping to go on on their property. Sometimes, it's not necessarily their fault, and we'll work with the property owners. But some of these in particular, rental properties, we see it, it's an ongoing problem. Every few months, when a resident moves out, they just dump their stuff in the alley or in the right-of-way. One of our methods that we are using to address this problem, I'll use the example, is a rental property, and maybe the renters move out, and they dump a lot of their trash and property in the right-of-way when they leave. Prior to this month, we were sending a 14-day notice on that. Well, that wasn't a really effective model in that the neighbors and the rest of the citizens had to look at this pile of garbage for 14 days before we could go out and issue citations on it. So, what we did is we lowered that timeframe to 48 hours. So, now, we can go out there, give a notice, so that the property owners have 48 hours to clean it up. And if they don't, we have the ability to issue citations. And at the same time, we'll be able to utilize our partnership with Transportation to get that cleaned up after that 48-hour period at that time. And through issuing citations when appropriate there and possible, we are able to offset some of the costs of that program. And then, we are working with legal staff on finding some solutions for private property illegal dumping also. So, this is just some of the pictures of the problems with our illegal dumping. This is the same location at three different times throughout the year. We see it at similar locations, regular locations, we all know that we go back to. And we call Transportation on, and like I said, they've been wonderful responding for us. But it is the same locations it seems like we go back to. So, it is our goal to prevent that from happening in the future by this program, including enforcement actions. So, alleys. I touched a little bit on it. Alleys are a problem, both gated, ungated in our city. A lot of it is just vegetation. But we do have some alleys that do have some illegal dumping that goes on. So, what we've kind of developed, and we're seeing some success, our other postcard, we have a different postcard, and we use our city's GIS mapping system, where we can highlight the residents around a specific alley that we've identified as having some issues with. And we send out postcards to our residents. These pictures right here are before-and-after pictures of simply sending out postcards. So, we think it's a very cost-effective model to mail out postcards, reminding citizens they're responsible for their half the alley if it's a gated alley. And versus sending a code officer out there in a truck to take pictures and draw cases and mail out notices to the citizens, the postcards are not only effective, but a very cost-effective model. Now, there will be times that our illegal dumping pilot program, we're going to have to address it through that, that program right there to get their alleys clean. But alleys are definitely, have become a priority for us to get those clean. And our officer safety. We're asking our code officers to go out and make face-to-face contacts with citizens about violations. It's really, I compare it to having our police officers go out and do traffic stops. So, in order to increase our safety for our code officers, we've instituted a few things. Last fiscal year, Director Zalanka actually purchased cellphones with tracking apps for all of our code officers. But we've changed our policies a little bit, where now, if we're going to issue citations, that we require two code officers to go do that at a time, simply for safety reasons right there. We also have increased our amount of our use of our process servers. Instead of sending out code officers, we send out professional process servers. We have a contract with a company through the city. We also have purchased inexpensive two-way radios for us to use during our team-up-to-clean-up events while we're out walking around the neighborhood if we need to get ahold of each other. And then, we've partnered with our police department to provide some increased de-escalation and conflict resolution training. It's one of the benefits of, we have a lot of retired police officers in our unit, and the history of, and the background they have with de-escalation and dealing with conflicts has definitely been a benefit for us. Some of our goals for this coming fiscal year, we want to increase our team-up cleanup to events to anywhere from 10 to 12, maybe even more than that if we can get them done in a timeframe. We want to inspect and resolve over 1,000 properties. And we've doubled our amount of debris that we want to remove from the city, is at 200 tons. During our first quarter of this year, as we transition away from our residential projects, due to the weather primarily, it's not that our code staff can't work in the, doing these projects, it's that we don't think we'll see the same results of asking our citizens to go out and clean up their property in the middle of July versus the nice weather we have in the fall and spring. So, what we're doing is we're shifting our focus to the alleyways this summer, as well as we've been working with economic development and working projects in our redevelopment areas. So, our first one is going to be along the Broadway Road corridor from Gilbert to approximately Elma School to address some non-permitted activities and zoning violations, as well as enforcing our new sign code in those areas. One of the other models that came up with, that we're doing our first one this week and with Councilman Heredia, is we want to find a, definitely a long-term solution to our team-up-to-clean-up events. We know that we can go in and clean up a neighborhood with, and partner with the citizens. What we don't necessarily know yet is how it's going to look a year later or long-term. So, we want to develop a model that we can empower the citizens of that neighborhood to find a long-term solution, as well as city staff. So, we are doing a little neighborhood barbecue at the end of our projects, primarily just to thank them for their hard work. Obviously, with 97% compliance, they're putting their work into their neighborhood, they're making that investment. But secondly is, we've got this momentum going, and we want to be able to hand that off to other city departments, like our Community Service, our Neighborhood Outreach, our Crime Prevention from the Police Department, so that hopefully, we can establish some relationships in those neighborhoods long-term, so that our, the results of our project go above and beyond just a year. Our budget last year was 1.6 million. We are going to come back under that, primarily due to some vacancy savings from those increased staffing positions from last fiscal year. It took us a month or so to get those filled at the beginning of the fiscal year, so we do have some vacancy savings from that. So, our budget mimics that from last year again. Our code compliance, we're 100% staffed. As I said, we were at nine code officers and one supervisor last fiscal year. This fiscal year, we had a 40% increase in staffing, so we're up to 12 code officers, two supervisors, and then myself as the administrator.
Counsel, any questions?
Really, I just have a comment. And Lieutenant Russell, thank you for your presentation. You know, I think it was last year we were, or the year before, maybe, we were talking about code compliance and the need to make sure that you're staffed appropriately. And because when neighbors are wanting to take their neighborhood back, or citizens are wanting to take their neighborhood back, then we should be doing all we can to help them. And that's exactly, I think, what you've done for Desert Sands. And, you know, they reached out, there was a citizen that reached out, wanted to take their neighborhood back. You guys jumped in, as well as PD, and really transformed that entire neighborhood. I was lucky enough to go out on a ride-along a few weeks ago and ask the officer to take me through Desert Sands at night, because I wanted to see what it was like. It was dusk, it was probably about 7 o'clock, 7:30, when we rolled through. Neighbors were actually outside talking to each other. There were people walking their dogs down the neighborhood. That didn't happen a year ago. As soon as it got dark, as soon as the porch lights came on, people were almost barricading themselves in their houses. So, you truly, with code compliance and all that you guys have done, I think you've truly transformed that neighborhood, and I'm looking forward to doing the same in some of the other neighborhoods in District 6, and really trying to help people, like you said, take their neighborhoods back. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Councilman Thompson, thank you very much.
Councilmember Duff?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for all the work that you've done. I've seen, from the time I was campaigning and ride-along that I went about a month ago, tremendous differences in neighborhoods that I really thought were going to be a long struggle. So, kudos to you. Regarding how, what's the best way for a neighbor, a resident to report any code compliance or any issues like in their neighborhood? Is it best to call you, or the CityLink app, or contact their council member?
Vice Mayor, Councilman Duff, there is a number of ways to get ahold of us and request services. They have the ability, citizens have the ability to go online, create a username, and they can enter code cases right there online through our Dimes or Acela system. The second one is to call our call center in Development Services, and the staff there can take the information, enter a call for us, the staff can enter it there. They can use the CityLink app, which is, we do get a number of cases through that because it's really user-friendly. And then, the last way is to simply call the code compliance unit. Our numbers are all listed on the city website, and we do get citizens who aren't tech-savvy, who enjoy just calling us and saying, "Hey, I've got an issue with one of my neighbors." One of the changes that we made this year to make it even more user-friendly to our citizens is, prior to this time last year, we weren't taking anonymous complaints from citizens at all. I can tell you, 22 years in the police department, a majority of our workload comes from anonymous people calling, they don't want to give their name. And we've changed, and we've seen a drastic increase in people calling in and just calling in the code issues and not wanting to leave their name. So, emphasize to the citizens out there, they don't have to leave any information, they can call us. There's a number of ways they can do it if they want to address any code compliance issues in their area.
Great. Well, I think you're changing the face of code compliance, which used to be kind of, you know, a very negative thing. But seeing the transformation in the neighborhoods and the engagement that you're doing, it's a positive thing. And I hope the neighbors, when they see that you're working in the neighborhoods, sees a great opportunity to interact and get all the resources they need to improve their neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor, Councilman Duff, thank you very much.
Councilmember Heredia?
You know, Councilwoman Duff took my question, but as far as any data on, you know, I appreciate the program, I love the name, so the name is great. Any data on how many code complaints you're receiving, like on a weekly, monthly basis, that you all are able to meet, or?
Yes, Vice Mayor and Councilman Heredia. This year, or, excuse me, last year, we were roughly at 5,700 code complaint cases for the year. This year, we're on pace to complete roughly 8,000. I would anticipate in fiscal year 1920, that going up to roughly 9,000 code cases. So, we are increasing our workload. A lot of that has to do, stems from our proactive cases. So, once we start including our legal dumping cases and alley cases in there, I would anticipate that we will see upwards of 9,000 code cases in the next fiscal year.
Other than the team-up events, is it more based on still complaints? Or do you all have additional proactive, like in the alleys or other places that you're looking for compliance? Is that a proactive or a mix of both?
Vice Mayor and Counsel, it's a mixture of it. We obviously get, probably the largest portion comes from citizen complaints. But our code officers also do go out and do proactive work themselves in the neighborhoods. And those include alleys also. So, it's a mix of where it's coming from. We do get a lot from city staff that come in through council office and council assistance. We get from other city departments. But the big two, I would say, are just from citizen complaints coming in through our system, and then proactive work from our code compliance officers.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Just a comment. I've been on council for five years now, and code has always been an issue. But you've made a complete transformation of how you deliver your service, so I want to commend you for that. Lieutenant Russell, I got your name right this time. But I really do want to commend you for that. And for our city for providing the funding for your staff. And so, we appreciate the city management for supporting your efforts. You've done a tremendous job, and I like your quick response. If I get an email, I'll send it to you, you take care of it. So, thank you so much for what you're doing for our community, I appreciate it. And you need to be commended for that.
Vice Mayor, Councilman Luna, thank you very much.
Mayor, do you have any questions?
Thank you. No, I'll just join in by saying, it looks like we're doing a great job. I appreciate all the additional officers and the additional inspections that are going on. So, thank you for your good work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. One thing, Lieutenant, I'd like to weigh in, is that, first of all, safety, I think, is paramount. So, I appreciate you doing the two officers, code officers, when you do enforcement and hand out the notice of violations. But I think that's important, you know, having two there. Probably the next step, you might be wearing body cams, who knows in the future. So, that might be something the organization thinks of. The other thing, I'd like that you can ask and continue to work with legal and get ideas on how we can help private property owners clean up their properties. And I know we've talked about this in the past, but when you send out a notice of violation, you could also include a cleanup schedule and allows private property owners to say, "Hey, the city can help me clean up my property." And we get a little bit of return on investment there for what we're investing in the program. So, yeah, again, thank you for all you do, I appreciate it. I'm thankful to work with you. All right. With that, I guess we're done with your presentation. Anything else?
Come on, you crazy thing. Vice Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, good morning. My name is RJ Zeder with the Transportation Department. Sorry, let's get our presentation up there. Oops. Again, my name is RJ Zeder with the Transportation Department. With me this morning is Eric Kaderian, Deputy Transportation Director for Traffic Engineering. Thanks for the opportunity to discuss the highlights of our proposed fiscal year 1920 transportation budget. Our mission statement is pretty straightforward, to plan, design, and operate and maintain a safe and efficient multimodal transportation system. You know, what that means is that the city's transportation network is more than cars and trucks. It includes people, pedestrian, people on bikes. We work with our transit team to really try to have an interconnected system that serves our residents, visitors, and businesses. Big picture, transportation is broken down into two major units, field operations and traffic engineering. I generally describe field operations to people as if you can see it within the public right-of-way, it probably belongs to us in some form. So, in addition to pavement management, you know, streetlights, landscape maintenance, you know, all fall within the purview of field operations. Traffic engineering, which is Eric's responsibility, includes our intelligent transportation system, that is our traffic signal network. We are approaching 470 signalized intersections. That all feeds back to our traffic management center, where we have a staff that keeps an eye on and are responsible for coordinating our signal system. In addition, Eric's staff has a team of folks that work on traffic studies, transportation planning, as well as our bike and pedestrian program. Eric's going to talk about some of our key performance measures that we use to evaluate our work on a day-to-day basis. So, Eric.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, councilmembers, I'm going to go over just a couple of our key performance measures as we're out maintaining our streets and our transportation network. The first one, we shared this slide last year, but we'll probably share it, you know, continual years, because one of the, you know, major points of focus for us is maintaining our streets and maintaining our pavement, so that it's in good condition. We use a scale called Pavement Condition Index, and that is a score from 0 to 100. Closer to 100, the range from 70 to 100 is good condition. That's where we want to be keeping our pavement. This is, the pictures here give us, give you a representation of some of the treatments that we use out on our pavement to rehabilitate our pavement or, and raise that PCI number. So, in a given year, we So, in a given year, we spend $8 million in overlays and $8 million in seal treatments. The $8 million in overlay is transferred out of our department budget and into the CIP. The $8 million in seal is included in our department budget, our operating budget. So, our goal for the entire street network is to have a PCI of 70. Our current assessment is, overall, is 77, which we are happy with. But it's easier to keep a good PCI number and do the maintenance treatments that we're doing than try to wait a couple of years and let that dip. And then you have to go into some major rehabilitation type projects. Also, another performance measure we'd like to highlight is the number of days that it takes to repair a streetlight when we're notified. Our goal is five working days. The average over the last year is 3.66 days. Just, so we are meeting that goal. Some of those, some of the streetlight repairs do take a little bit longer because we have to work with the streetlight service providers to re-energize that location. Also, we'd like to highlight the pothole repairs. We have a goal of responding to the requests that we get within a day. And we're happy to say that we're at 100% of reaching that goal. You know, similar to code compliance, we receive complaints about potholes via the telephone, via the CityLink app, and then also staff just self-reporting those issues. Just highlighting, the number of calls varies from month to month, especially in large rain event months. We tend to see more potholes. As we know, as a city, we have a focus on smart city initiatives. And we just want to highlight some that are in our transportation department. The first that we'd like to highlight is the adaptive traffic signal control systems that we have. These are systems that we have located in the Fiesta District and around Superstition Springs Mall that actually dynamically change their signal timing throughout all times of the day based on traffic volumes. We instituted the first of these systems in 2010 around the Superstition Springs Mall. We actually upgraded that system last year and is, we're working much better. We're happier with it. And then, and that's the same system that we have on the Fiesta District. Also, we have a great communications network backbone for our traffic signal system and our, and we've branched out and are using it more in our transportation department for more than just traffic signals. We have 216 miles of fiber on our system and all of our traffic signals are either connected directly to the fiber or via wireless radios. We've also been working and we've connected 16 of our pump stations. So for storm events, that we have video surveillance of our major drainage basins. So during storm events, we don't have to send somebody out to see if the drainage basin is full. We can see that through our system. And also, we are starting to connect our irrigation controllers so that we can control those via the internet also. Another project that we want to highlight, we've been working with the fire department and we've had a pilot program over the past six months to test out using a GPS system for emergency preemption instead of the StrobeLight-type technology where you need direct line of sight for a traffic signal to be able to change it when a fire and medical has an emergency. We've got great response from the fire department and we're looking in ways to expand that. We have a pilot project along Dobson Road where there are curves south of the US 60 and then around the Superstition Springs Mall area also.
Streetlight Master Plan. So, many of you are aware that we've been working for some time on evaluating how we might convert our existing high-pressure sodium streetlights to LED or light emitting diode. The LED streetlights are far more, far more efficient from an energy standpoint than the current high-pressure sodium lights. We have two pilot areas. One is within what's called the Desert Upland area in Councilmember Luna's district and then a smaller area within the city of Mesa Electric Area on Frazier, which is within Councilmember Duff's district. The, there's really two major parts to the study that will result in the plan, which we hope to bring to the Sustainability and Transportation Committee after council comes back from break later this summer or early fall. The first thing we did is get out into the field to sort of take measurements and establish a baseline of what our lighting levels are. We know, Councilmember Luna certainly knows that there was particular interest in the northeast part of the city as new development was starting to stand up arterial streetlights where none had existed previously. So, what we've learned from that study is that we've identified what we're calling lighting zones across the city. And obviously, we'll share more of this as we move forward. But it's a recognition that not every neighborhood in Mesa is the same and has the same needs from a lighting standpoint. There are more heavier trafficked areas from a pedestrian standpoint, from a vehicle standpoint, businesses, density, you know, that would likely, you know, dictate higher levels of lighting. Then, of course, there are areas in the city, you know, where lower levels of lighting are warranted. One of the things that we are continuing to follow, especially within the Desert Uplands area, is dimming. So, with the existing high-pressure sodium lights, it goes on and it goes off. It's a photocell, you know, and it's, if you want to call it a dumb light, you know, that, it's what it does. As we transition to LEDs, one of the benefits is we can attach what's called a smart node, and that would replace the photocell. And that allows us to dim the lights time of day. So what we'll discuss more with you as we move forward with the plan is that by lighting zone, we will discuss concepts for lowering lights in the overnight hours. And we wanted to make sure our roads were safe, so we did a lot of measurements pre and post-dimming to ensure that our primary goal of protecting our motorists and pedestrians is met, while at the same time, where possible, we can reduce glare and that sort of thing, especially for properties that back up to our arterial streets. So...
RJ, we have a question.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Whitaker?
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, please.
On the lights, I know that last year we discussed that you were going to go back to SRP. Obviously, an LED light requires a significant amount of less electricity than in a high-pressure sodium light.
Right.
Is there any luck with that, or can you update us on the status of that conversation?
Sure. Councilmember Whitaker, we met with SRP staff within the last month specifically to talk about streetlight rates. So, as we've discussed before, it's a term that's used in the industry. It's called rate buckets. So, the idea is that, obviously, the streetlight rate is tied to the wattage, you know, of the fixture. The current rate structure has very large rate buckets, meaning the range. Say it's zero to 75 watts. So if your, if your fixture falls anywhere within that range, you get charged at the top of the range. So the current challenge that we have on recognizing the financial savings is that if we replace an existing HPS light with an LED light, it still may fall within the same rate band. So, we are working with SRP. We've also had conversations with Mr. McCray and Energy Resources for the city of Mesa Electric Area to create smaller rate buckets so that we can realize savings from, you know, the energy reduction in place. SRP has expressed a willingness to work with us. We're awaiting the, what the rate proposal is. We have not seen it yet. And that's going to be a key to how we finance potentially the conversion, you know, of what's about 90% of our system moving forward.
Councilmember Thompson?
RJ, I think, you know, from our SAT committee meeting, when we talked about this, I think one of the reasons why we wanted to do, to run the pilot in our downtown areas is because we control the electricity and we can get actual, actual rate savings or cost savings by going LED if we individual meter or what have you our, our streetlights. And I think that was so that we would have the data to be able to go to SRP and say, see, this is actual metered savings. It's not based just on wattage, but actual LED uses across our downtown area or across our electric service area. And that would give us the data to be able to go in and fight SRP or lobby SRP to make a change to their rate structure favorable to LEDs. Because certainly, we're, because the, we're using less power to power those streetlights, it's actually saving them in the long run of having to go in and build a new powers, power plant or make modifications to power plants to ramp up for more energy. If we were to convert, you know, all of our, our streetlights to LED, it obviously would be a, be a big factor for them in, in energy savings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. We have expressed to SRP that we have not only metering data, you know, that we've gathered working with Mr. McCray and his staff in the downtown area, but additionally, the smart nodes that we're adding to the streetlights as part of the pilot have very accurate consumption data that comes from that. We're finding that the meter data from Energy Resources very closely matches what we're finding just through our controllers. We've offered to share that with SRP. It's a work in progress. We'll see how that goes. We, at one point, we tried to do it regionally and have the cities together work with SRP. They indicated a desire to work with the cities individually. So we're trying to follow that path right now. So, along those lines, just finishing up on Streetlight Master Plan, Councilmember Luna is aware, on Ellsworth Road in particular, and this is a challenge where you have lights that are in the median. So rather than being on the outside of the street facing in, they're in the middle of the street facing out. So we have added actually front shields that we designed with a consultant of ours, and that has greatly reduced the glare that spills over. So we're pretty pleased where we're at, and we look forward to coming to SAT and council in the fall to finalize our recommendations tied to the plan. And lastly, real quickly, Eric mentioned this. We are trying to be smart in terms of our irrigation system. As you would imagine, for transportation, our system is very linear, which makes it a challenge. But as we're going and doing what we call landscape refurbishments, we budget about $500,000 a year to upgrade. Where landscaping has died over the years and that sort of thing, we start in the ground. The first part is to repair existing irrigation systems. And as we're doing that, we are attaching smart controllers so that we will be notified of a leak and we can better manage our water consumption. Proposed budget changes. Lieutenant Russell talked about this in the code compliance presentation. Our largest request is to create an illegal dumping pilot program. This would include $560,000 in one-time costs and about $250,000 in ongoing costs for two employees, a rear loader garbage truck that's small enough to get into our alleys, as well as some equipment to help load, pick up and load trash and debris into the solid waste truck. What we're trying to do is shift the, sort of the paradigm here. Right now, and the pictures Lieutenant Russell showed you are very accurate. I actually knew, the one picture he showed you, I know exactly where it is. And it is every couple of months, you know, that we go down that alley. It backs up to some apartment buildings, we know, and I could just tell. Okay, we know where that one is. And our staff know where it is. But we've been in sort of a reactive mode because we have one employee that we call our hazard response person. And he's around the city fixing potholes, removing stuff that may be in the street impeding traffic and that kind of thing. We'll scale up as if we have larger dumps like some of those pictures showed, but we'd like to turn that into a proactive model. And we'll certainly rely on the code compliance officers, you know, to feed us information. But we'd like to take that a step further, that because we know where these areas are, that we're not waiting, that we're going. Additionally, Ryan showed you pictures of alleys. And he's correct that it's not just the gated alleys, or not just the ungated alleys, but it's also the gated alleys. You know, in some cases, people will leave a lock open, or the gates get damaged, or sometimes it's property owners just taking their stuff from their property and, you know, tossing it back, you know, in the alley. The challenge we face with right-of-ways and what code compliance faces is how do we assign a dumping issue to an owner of a property or a resident? You know, short of, you know, leaving their utility bill, you know, taped to the, you know, debris that's in the alley, it's very difficult sometimes to determine, you know, who did, you know, who did the dumping. The flip side to that is, it, it's sort of a, it continues itself. It perpetuates because folks know that we're going to clean it up, but that's a reality, you know, that we have to deal with. So what I'd like to see our folks do is something systematic where our first priority is what I would call the front-facing dumps that people can see from the street. But I'd also like to get into those alleys on a systematic basis. We would model this after our existing graffiti abatement program, which, you know, hopefully you're all aware of. And that also has a goal of a one-day turnaround on abatement. We get a number of calls or requests through CityLink, phone calls, emails, but actually, the bulk of our response is staff-initiated. They know where the problems are, you know, and they go out and address those. And I'm pretty pleased with the work we've done in that area. So, we do think this can make a significant difference. Secondly, is landscape maintenance.
Just so to be clear to council, so, the difference today is, RJ, your folks just get called out any time during the week. It's kind of, they drop everything else and come respond to code compliance or some complaint. The proposal, council, is we're going to go, we're going big on this one, right? So you've got large pieces of equipment. We've got a rear loader dumpster, dump truck, but it's a smaller version so they can actually fit down the alleyways. And then that's with, included also in addition is that a truck and a trailer?
With a skid steer.
With a skid steer.
Mm-hmm.
To also support that equipment. And then we're assigning two full-time employees to this crew. So now, instead of having to pull somebody off, this is now a fully dedicated crew to illegal dumping. So this is a much, we're taking this much stronger, I guess, approach to this. The idea is it can be, it's going to be coordinated with a code compliance. This is a resource for code compliance. As our officers are out doing their work, working with RJ, we can literally every week, every month, have a specific program or route, whatever area that they are addressing. So, it's a significant amount of resources, but we felt like to really be effective and, you know, we're not, today, we're just being reactive and just managing what's most problematic. The idea is to try to be aggressive in getting there ahead of time. But again, RJ's saying it, and Lieutenant Russell's working with Natalie and City Attorney's Office, is we're trying to figure out, is we know we need to single pick it up and get it taken care of, but eventually, we also need to try to figure out how to hold people accountable for it. And then again, reminder, this is only on the public right-of-way. That's because, and that's why we're allowing this to be funded out of transportation, because it is in the right-of-way that they're responsible for maintaining. They will not be, these activities, these crews will not be working on dumps, illegal dumps that are on private property. So we have to make that distinction because of the way we're setting up the funding for it.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Again, landscape maintenance, just increased costs. We're finding, I'm sure Mr. Hirschberg can, you know, talk about this as well, our contractual expenses for landscape maintenance are just rising rapidly. You know, in addition, we're adding additional landscape maintenance areas as we complete new road projects, but this will allow us to maintain the level of service that we currently have. And lastly, Eric will talk about our street intersection prioritization improvement plan.
It's a long name.
It is.
But looking forward 20 years, as you've heard, MAG has started an initiative to look at some sort of extension to the Prop 400 sales tax that pays for some of our arterial improvements. To be proactive, we would like to do this study and look at about 100 arterial to arterial intersections and the rest of our unbuilt roadways and look at our capacity and safety needs over the next 20 years so that we can provide a prioritized list of projects if needed, when the time comes for, for that initiative to be in place.
Continuing, Vice Mayor, members of the council, we'd like to continue our illuminated street say, name sign project. This is to better identify entry points into Mesa. Obviously, we have a number of illuminated street signs in the Main Street corridor and some other select parts of the city, but this is to let people know when they're coming into Mesa. The first of these signs we recently installed just prior to spring training started, starting on Rio Salado in front of Sloan Park. And our focus will be, as we move forward, on to prioritize the installation of the signs based on the amount of traffic, you know, that's coming in on particular streets into Mesa. The last two projects, we propose to actually fund within our existing budget. So we're not asking for additional resources to fund these projects, but we thought they were of note. The first is to do a minor project, but we think it'll be of great benefit in Councilmember Thompson's district, to add some pavements on the north leg of Signal Butte, north of Elliott Road. The current configuration, there's three lanes northbound and one lane southbound. So, there's congestion, you know, southbound, so we need to do some improvements in that area. There's undeveloped property on the west side of the street. There's undeveloped property on the west side of the street that will allow us to have two lanes of traffic in each direction. This is important because, as many of you know, from Signal Butte, the next north-south street that you can get to the freeway is Ellsworth. So there's quite a bit of traffic on Signal Butte. And lastly, proposing interim pathway improvement project along the north side of the US 60. This would be a temple, temporary gravel path with fencing from the consolidated canal to Velvista Drive. We say interim because there is a larger proposal to design a permanent pathway from the consolidated to the eastern canal. You'll be seeing an agenda item coming forward in May for what's called a design assistance grant, and that allows us to sort of evaluate the quarter on that and a continuation of the Mesa Gateway Path in southeast Mesa. But we know there are people that are using this area, so we think this will be a positive benefit in the near term. Funding sources for transportation, real quickly. Our, our proposed budget for next year is just over $45 million. The two largest revenue sources that help support that are the local street fund. The, that is, those funds are generated from a third of a cent sales tax that is dedicated to streets. So that's almost $19 million. And then highway user revenue funds at $21 million. And Scott Butler and his team are always trying to make sure that we're getting the most of those funds that we can.
Mayor, any questions for you, mayor? Kevin, go ahead.
Sorry, I had to take you off, move.
No, thank you. That's a great presentation. Thank you, RJ. I, I like the additions to the budget that were mentioned. I think both of those are, all three of those are very needed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
RJ, thanks for the presentation. You know, I don't get to say it very often in public, but thank you for all that you and your staff do. I know I'm, I am on you guys constantly, you know, because unlike the rest of the city, we have a lot of needs in transportation in the east part of the, the valley, or east part of the city. Primarily, you know, because, and a lot of people don't know this, but a lot of the roads out there are still county-owned. And so some of those that we actually do own are some that we've either annexed or are just some that we've owned for, for quite a while but never had development on until recently. And it's causing, with the, with the growth that we're seeing, both at Cadence and at Signal Butte, and as Bellevia gets built out as well, we're seeing more and more traffic. And then with Elliott Road being widened out, it's forcing people onto railroad and creating more issues there. It's creating more pressure on Signal Butte. And so there's always needs. And I know that I probably overburden and overtax you guys a lot, whether it's with signal light timing or, or, or whatever. But I just want to say thank you on behalf of the citizens for all that you guys do and your responsiveness in taking care of, of the citizens in District Six.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Frankie.
RJ, thank you for the presentation. Any, I believe last year you mentioned you're all testing pavements or different types of pavements on, on the road. And any updates on what the kind of different mixes that you were all piloting?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Haradia, we, this is a joint effort with Transportation and our Engineering Department, who actually oversees the projects, you know, when we're putting down new pavement, whether it's mill and overlay or actual new construction. We have a very passionate pavement management supervisor who is always testing, you know, new technology, whether it's surface seals, you know, or, or actual pavement. We are working on some changes to our, what we call our mix design. We're having conversations with the associated general contractors, and then we'll have to come back and talk with developers, you know, as well if we're, you know, interested in making some changes. I won't bore you with all the words, but we do use a modified asphalt product that we believe provides a longer-lasting and less expensive-to-maintain asphalt surface. And as Eric pointed out earlier, the key is not only the asphalt's up front, but it's getting in early and often on the pavement treatments. If, if you let a road deteriorate, and we actually have a small section of roadway that we thought was the county's and the county thought was ours, but I could take a picture of it and show you that what happens if you don't maintain a road for 18 years. And it's, it's significant. So, you know, the key is that balance that we have about half of our money, eight million going to overlays, and another eight million going to the pavement treatments. And it's those two things together that allow us to maintain our, our infrastructure. We use a number of different types of treatments, and we're following over time, kind of testing, you know, this application versus another application, and that feeds into our pavement management system. So it's, it's evolving, but we're always looking at new ways to, to do business.
Another comment on anything, any conversations that you all having on autonomous sensors? Or I know there is, in the news several months ago, I heard that some companies are moving into potential sensors and working with city governments and seeing what's the capacity for, for them to maybe overlay sensors on the roadways, to just maybe get ahead of the game and thinking about that. Have you all had conversation on that end?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Haradia, yes. And a lot of this is with, with Eric's team. There is so much information out there, and some of it's contradictory. You know, there are different conclusions. When I was with the city of Chandler and we started talking with Waymo, you know, Google, at that time, we were told, at least by the, the one company, that they did not want us to make any modifications to our infrastructure. They wanted their technology to adapt to the, to the existing infrastructure. I'm not sure that's where we're at today. You know, it, 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 it's a challenge. I think there's a reason why those companies are started testing here in Arizona, and it's because we don't have snow. You know, so, you know, how does a car in another climate see lane lines? And, you know, that sort of things in inclement weather. There are wildly varying expectations in terms of when truly autonomous vehicles will be on the market. Some folks are at as low, early as 2030. I've seen things as late as 2050. Eric and his staff are constantly following, you know, the technology. Whether we have to modify our infrastructures is a question. You'll hear terms like V to I, and that's vehicle to infrastructure, or V to V, vehicle to vehicle. It's likely going to end up being a combination of both. We don't know yet what we're going to have to do to allow autonomous vehicles to connect. Although currently, we have a pilot program. It's a company that's working for Audi, and we are pushing to the cloud our signal timing data. And the, the theory is that it's predictive so that if you have a heads-up display or something, you know, in your car, you'll know what's happening ahead of you, you know, in terms of the, the signal infrastructure. That's, so that's one example where we're actually sharing data with the, the private sector.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker.
RJ, just want to say thank you to your team. I know every time I have graffiti problems, you guys respond almost as soon as I put my phone down. So I appreciate the response time on that. And I had another question, but I can't remember what it was. So I'll just leave you with a compliment.
Thank you. You know how to find us.
I told her. Go ahead.
Thank you, RJ. I know we've adopted a complete streets policy, and I appreciate that in the city of Mesa. But as I've suggested before, and I just want to reiterate that as we redo roads or build new roads, that we be very focused on people. And there's a lot of, people are choosing now to bike more and things like that and have those transit ways other than cars. And so we want to make sure we provide as much as we can in striping, providing areas, building into our policies to have for bikes and scooters and stuff, get them off the sidewalks, having areas where they feel safe along the roads. I know a lot of people, even around here, they say I only have like five miles, but I can't find a safe route, a route that I feel safe because they're on busy streets or it's Kamloops. So as we work through our reworking of our roads and stuff like that, if we can always keep that in mind and do, because we're going to see more bikes, more scooters, more of these alternative transit, and we need to evolve with that. So just want to put that out there.
We'll certainly do that.
Councilmember Luna.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. RJ, great job. As you know, my community, the desert uplands, are very, very active in wanting to mitigate the amount of light spill in that area. So I appreciate all the hard work. I know you met with them last September over at Zohar's Elementary School. And then I noticed on Nextdoor, you sent the communication to that area. Are you going to plan, are you planning to meet with them again at Zohar's to get more input or just present the results of your study?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Luna, at this point, we're planning to present the information from our study. We have a larger email blast that should be going out today in addition to the Nextdoor posting for the folks, both within the Frazier area, the smaller area in downtown, but obviously the larger group of folks that are interested in the desert uplands area. To let them know where we're at, in, in that, that email blast, we're going to let them, we're, we will let them know, you know, when this item comes forward to SAT and then ultimately the council so that they can have feedback. We're at a point right now with the lighting levels, particularly in desert uplands, that we feel comfortable where we're at. We would not feel comfortable further reducing the lighting levels. And that was based on the work that our lighting consultant did, along with our, our staff team, that we think we've struck that balance point. You know, with the addition of the shields and the 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM dimming, that while I recognize there are a few people out there that would like no lights, I think we've found a, a good place that we've addressed the concerns that those folks have, which are legitimate, but we're maintaining our primary purpose, which is roadway safety.
And I think that a lot of the residents in that area are appreciative that we're doing this study. I haven't had any complaints that have come through email. I think they appreciate the fact that we're trying to work with the community and trying to mitigate some of the lighting in that area. You might, as the development on the east side of Ellsworth finally comes completed, then you might start, you might, I might be hearing some complaints about that as well. So we'll work together to try to mitigate some of those issues. But thanks for the hard work. I know, I appreciate it. I know that my residents appreciate it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, council, any more questions? Thank you, transportation.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and council. I'm Jody Sorel with Transit, and I have a, a guest speaker here to my, to my left. Today's very appropriate that we're going over the transit budget on April 25th because the American Public Transit Association, its inaugural Get On Board With Transit Day is today. And so this is to create public awareness on what's happening in the transit community. Our mission in transit is to collaborate with our regional partners to provide innovative, safe, and efficient transit options that support mobility and access and economic vitality in Mesa. And it's the collaborate with the regional partners that's important because transit just doesn't stop at our borders. It crosses into Gilbert, Chandler, Tempe, and so, and into Phoenix. And so we need to work, to have an efficient system, we need to work with all those partners. But we have a big event happening here in about three weeks. On May 18th, we will be opening the Gilbert Road Light Rail Extension for, for revenue service. That's an additional about two miles to the rail system. We'll have an event from 9:00 to noon. It'll be in the Gilbert Road Park and, Gilbert Road Park and Ride Lot area. It's a community event, so there'll be community games and, or carnival games and activities and food. And it wouldn't be an opening event with a one or two speakers to talk about, about the system. And I think Scott has a little bit more to add.
Yeah, Vice Mayor and council, we, we just wanted to take this opportunity as Gilbert Road's coming, coming to a close, and we'll have this grand opening to really go back and, and tell council, give a little perspective about how this project got across the finish line. It, it was initially included as part of the city's discussion all the way back in 2002 as Prop 400 projects were being discussed. And then as a compromise, you remember at that point, light rail was not even under construction yet throughout the valley. And so there was some uncertainty about what it would mean for the valley and, and what it would mean for Mesa. So at the time, the decision was made not to extend light rail all the way out to Gilbert Road, but to stop at Mesa Drive to get an idea of, of what the impact of light rail would be on Mesa. So in 2009, though, the city council at the time made it a priority to extend from Mesa Drive out to Gilbert.
Yeah. So the original plan for light rail was that...
It was only going to go to Mesa Drive. That was it.
Right.
That was, that was the only thing that was budgeted for, and the only thing was in the original plan.
Yeah, that, that's right. And I appreciate Mr. Brady clarifying. The initial recommendation had been to go out to Gilbert Road. But as Chris just stated, the, the final project that was included in Prop 400 only went to Mesa Drive. So there had been a desire based on the criteria at the time to, to see Gilbert Road as the ultimate destination for, for this because of ridership, because of access to riders in the east, east Mesa. After council gave direction in 2009 for, for staff to go and, and find a way to, to use regional funds to get Prop 4, to get Gilbert Road extension complete, we were able to work with MAG and some of our regional partners in order to repurpose regional federal dollars that had been committed to Mesa. And so there's, there's a lot of detail that I could bore you with. But when we came to council in 2012 with the final funding recommendation, it was estimated that for the, for the city to do this, and the direction we received from council authorized its spending up to $21 million in local funds to pay for interest costs of accelerating this project and completing this project. We're happy to report today, after a lot of hard work from transportation, transit, budget, the finance team, but importantly, the Maricopa Association of Governments, who's really tried to work with us to decrease these interest costs. The, the worst-case scenario of what we will spend is $500,000. So instead of $21 million that had been authorized by council, the worst-case scenario is half a million dollars. And it's a real success story about how this city continues to find creative ways to deliver infrastructure. We did that on State Route 24. Before that, we did it on Loop 202. We did that on the US 60. We have, we became the first city in the country to use federal funds in the manner that we did to construct light rail. Other cities have now, including Portland, have replicated what Mesa did. And it's a real testament to what Mesa's staff has been able to do to get this project delivered as cheaply as, as possible. So we wanted to highlight that. It's one of those little details that often goes overlooked, but it, it was a real cost savings to the city for the creativity that was put into delivering this infrastructure.
So Nana, we'll go into our performance metrics for our services because in transit, ridership really is your primary performance metric. So our light rail ridership is forecasted this year to be slightly less than the previous year, is down about 2%, which, when you look at the region when Scott Smith was here, they're looking at a larger, regionally, a larger decline of about 6%. And you'll see how ridership, ridership really did jump when we opened the central Mesa extension. Fiscal year '17 is the first full year of operations of that service. So we'll see what, how it trends next year at this time when we're here talking about budget again, and we'll have almost a full year of Gilbert Road operations. Our fixed route ridership, as Scott said, you know, regionally, there's a decline in that ridership. A lot of that has to do with, you know, the economy being good, people buying cars, gas prices are low. The other part of that really gets down to convenience. You know, the bus, when we, we do compete against the TNCs, we do compete against the personal car. And a lot of our service, you know, as a region, we've come to accept 30-minute frequency as acceptable. And that, that's a bit challenging for somebody to wait at a bus stop for 25 or 30 minutes for a bus. And then if they have to make a transfer, if they miss that, they got to wait another, you know, 30 minutes. We have done some improvements in Mesa that have seen, added some service that have seen some, some really significant improvements. About a year and a half ago, we added 15-minute frequency to Country Club from the light rail alignment down into Chandler. The Mesa section of that, of that alignment, of that, of that improvement, it goes down to baseline about, and we've seen an 11% increase in ridership over that period in that area. So that 15-minute frequency does, has made a significant difference in knowing, if I go out there, I know the longest I'm going to have to wait is 15 minutes for a bus, not, you know, 30 minutes for a bus. The other improvement we've seen, which we've seen more rapidly, is in November, end of October of 2018, we added four more evening trips to our Buzz service to better provide service to Riverview. And so for people working in Riverview. And we've, since November, in the same time period... And we've, since November, in the same time period last year, we've experienced about a 9% increase in ridership.
Question.
Hey, Jody, thank you. You know, with Uber, you can see when the car is approaching. Is there something like that with our Valley Metro? So if you're somebody that is going to be taking the bus, you can see when the bus is going to be arriving so that you're not waiting 30 minutes out in the hot sun?
Right. We don't have that on the smartphone. We don't have that capability on the smartphone. What Valley Metro does have is there are signs at every bus stop called Next Ride, so you can text a number, and each bus stop has a number, is given an ID number. So there's a number you can text, and it will shoot back to you when the next bus or two is scheduled to arrive.
A question, oh, sorry. Councilmember Duff.
Just a quick question. On the light rail ridership for 2019, is that forecast including the additional extension?
It is, but the additional extension will only really have about a month, month and a half of service.
Oh, this is our fiscal year.
So, yeah. So because it's not, it's opening in the middle of May, it has a very short window.
I'm sorry about that. I know our fiscal year is in June. And then is the fixed ridership impacted by the light rail ridership?
Um, it doesn't. It doesn't, it's not exactly going down because of light rail ridership. And actually, in some cases, in many cases in Mesa, our bus service feeds our light rail, so they work in tandem together.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Whitaker.
Just had a question on that scheduling. When you refer to the buses, how difficult would it be to equip the buses with GPS so that people can get like live feed data of when the buses are actually arriving?
They do. I believe all the buses do have GPS, and that's really like, so that they can track where they are, because we have 800 buses out in the field. And Valley Metro doesn't do that. There may be some private app developers that would do that, but Valley Metro can track it in their offices. They just don't have an app to be able to have the public access for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So this fiscal year, along that line of convenience and enhanced service, we're going to make some service enhancements, and all of these enhancements are going to be funded by our Prop 400 money, not our general fund. So Route 77 on baseline, it only comes into Mesa about a mile, but we're going to add one additional weekday trip. We're going to increase Saturday frequency from right now, it runs every 60 minutes in Mesa, we're going to increase that to every 30 minutes, and we're going to, Route 77 currently has no Sunday service, so we're going to add Sunday service to match the Saturday service, so that it, we have some service out there and can be some more competitive and convenient. Route 104 is Alma School. We're going to extend the weekend service, two hours to 11:30, so right now that service ends right about 9:15, 9:30, so adding some later evening service so people can make that bus-rail connection should improve stuff. We're going to increase the span of service on Saturday, meaning it's going to start a little earlier, end a little later, and increase frequency to 30 minutes, because right now it's on an hourly basis, and then match Sunday service to Saturday service. The 136 on Gilbert Road is probably going to have the biggest part of improvement. We're going to add five hours to the weekday service, so right now that route ends weekday service at about 6:30 at night. So people, it's challenging for people trying to get home after work, so extending that service to 11:00 PM will help. We're going to increase, again, increase Saturday service from an hour frequency to 30 minutes, and then add Sunday service to match the Saturday service. Some operational efficiencies we're going to recommend as part of this, and again, these are all Prop 400 routes, so this would save us some jurisdictional equity, and Prop 400 is currently Route 136 makes, four times a day makes a 12-mile deviation from Gilbert Road to serve Boeing. It carries about one passenger a trip, and it costs the city about $62,000 out of Prop 400 money to offer that. So we're recommending eliminating that diversion to make the route more efficient and not divert people off so far to make that connection. The other, the other recommendation is to eliminate the diversion from Power Road to the Mesa Community College Red Mountain Campus. Currently, we divert about 34 times a weekday and, I think it's 16 times a weekend, and it's carrying about 10 people a weekday and four people a weekend. That diversion cost is about $137,000 a year. So eliminating those and making those routes more efficient can help generate the ridership that if we need to at a later date, we can go back and add that diversion back in. Our paratransit ridership, I think we're all still remember our conversation a couple months ago. So our paratransit ridership, we're looking to, we're trending to hit our target, what we expected of 112,000 riders this year. And our ride choice ridership is going up slightly, and that is a big, I think, due to some of the changes we've made to ride choice in December. And so we want to, we want to see this bar chart keep growing. That's the goal. When we were here two months ago, we did talk, you guys wanted me to come back and give you a two-month, 60-day update on where we were with the paratransit outreach. So we've mailed, we mailed 624 letters to people that live outside the service area who will be impacted by this change. But 204 of those residents actually have used paratransit in the last year. So we really focused on the people that have used it in the last year. We have talked to, I have, I have more updated numbers since we, the slide was submitted, so we've talked to about 151 residents. We've called them and had conversations with them, explained the changes, helped them with trip planning as best we can. We have, there's 16 people that we've left, we haven't been able to talk to, but we have left three messages for them. Our goal is we'll leave three messages at different times in an attempt to try to reach people, because there's a, there's a change. We have, because we have 36 people that we have not been able to get ahold of, either because their number's not working, we're not able to leave a message, and that's typically, generally when that happens, it's because they've either moved out of Mesa or they've moved on in life. So we've reached, we've reached as many as we can. Not every story has been pleasant, not every story has been horrible. So we have some groups that we're still working with to try to find other options for them. And then after we finish this, we are putting together basically a media packet, if you will, to go out to the residential communities where we have larger number of residents to help do some personal ride choice and paratransit education and trip planning for Ride choice letters have gone out, so in ride choice, our residents need to be ADA certified to be able to use ride choice as of July 1. So we've sent letters out to 626 residents. There's about 530 that need to be certified. We're asking Valley Metro, that's of the whole universe, we're asking Valley Metro to help us pare that down to who have used ride choice in the last year, because that's really the demographic we need to get to. So we'll start reaching out to that. As soon as we get those numbers, we'll start reaching out to ride choice. But I wanted to share some statistics, because there were some questions last time we were here. So the participants, not every community participates in ride choice in the valley. So the participants in Valley Metro's ride choice program are Mesa, Chandler, Fountain Hills, Gilbert, the county, Surprise, and Tempe. Mesa does represent about 40% of the ridership in this program. So in March, the ride choice program provided 8,800 trips, but 85% of those trips were ambulatory trips, and it's 85% of those trips use Lyft. So we're seeing a big conversion from people going from cabs, needing cabs, to people liking the Lyft service and using it. There were 79 complaints during the month of March. Only four of those complaints were specifically driver-related. The other complaints had to deal with, like, they didn't like the fare, they had problems, they didn't like, you know, the reservation system. Those are, those are some things we can work out, but they're not, I think their biggest concern was what was that driver-passenger interaction? And the average response time from when somebody called to being dispatched was about eight minutes in the month of March. And I learned some interesting thing. I was on a panel with our ride choice provider in Lyft last, earlier this month, and what Lyft does, what our ride choice provider does is they provide this type of service, this kind of model, if you will, in other parts of the country and work very closely with Lyft. And so they're on a very regular basis where if they run across a driver, because there's so many of them, that probably isn't a good fit for this service, they send that information to Lyft, and Lyft takes them off this platform. So it's a constant monitoring process of what is happening with the driver. And so now we, now we get into the fun stuff, the budget. So this slide is really one we always show you to show the net cost of what Mesa pays for as far as transit service from Valley Metro, and how much money Prop 400 helps also support our costs. So Mesa provides net at the end of the year around $30 million worth of transit service. That's the value that we have in our, in our community. $15 million comes from the city, and about $15.5 million comes from Prop 400. So it's split about equal. And you can see what a big role it plays in our, in providing our bus service and helping to offset our paratransit costs in those areas. Other Mesa-funded costs for transit include administration, our park-and-ride facility and bus stop facility, O&amp;M, and then we do manage the Clean Air Club, our trip reduction program for the city. So in summary, as you look through this, you'll see in fiscal year '20, our fixed route bus budget does go down, and that is because the Route 77 and the 104 Alma School will transition from Mesa funding that to being funded by Prop 400. You'll see our light rail rider is, our light rail budget number is significantly higher than what it was on the previous slide, and that's because with light rail, we have to budget the gross cost for what light rail is. So this number reflects one full year of service for Gilbert Road, the additional security that goes along with Gilbert Road, and then Valley Metro, Scott had talked about the Respect the Ride program at Valley Metro, some of the funding for that, that program as well. And then our paratransit administration, everything else is pretty much the same. So with that, I'm a little worried, are you doing a calculator back there?
Question, Councilmember Luda.
Jody, thank you for the presentation. Now, how are you going to communicate the elimination of those routes?
That will be part of the, that'll be part of the Valley Metro service change process, but we're also going to reach out specifically to Boeing and to Red Mountain, to MCC, and have conversations with them about that. So we have plenty of time to get that out there, given the ridership, but we'll work through the Valley Metro process and then do a little bit of our own research, our own outreach.
Mayor, any questions from you?
No, thank you. I'll follow up maybe later, but thank you. Great presentation.
All right, then. Nothing else, then? Thank you, Jody. Mr. Hirschberg.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Mark Hirschberg, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. I'm proud and honored to have the opportunity to lead a group of dedicated professionals that contribute to a healthy and vibrant community by providing exceptional experiences and services to those who live, work, and play in Mesa through our facilities, our programs, and services we provide. That staff contributes in many areas to your strategic plans, from our park ranger patrols and community safety. Last couple of weeks ago with Chief Batista, you heard about our partnerships with public safety to support programming efforts, including our family fun nights at Eagles Community Center, the We Run Mesa program, and the Team Play program, transforming neighborhoods from our parks and facilities that we provide to the programming and the sustainable economy. Many of our facilities are used through sports, for sports tourism endeavors, including this weekend at Kino Aquatic Center, we'll be hosting the US National Masters Championships that start today. And then spring training, again, was a success with 320,000 fans at 29 games in Mesa this year, and Cubs breaking several of their own attendance records. Some of the performance measures that guide us through our operations is our, obviously, our participation numbers in our recreation programs by season. See a little dip there from last summer, and that's attributed to the education, the teacher strikes, and some of the schedule shifting that had to occur with Mesa Public Schools, who we utilize for several of our camp facilities. So we had to end up canceling a couple of sessions of camps and relocating some, which affected registration numbers. But I am happy to report that in the first couple of weeks of our summer registration this year, we have seen a 10% increase over those numbers of that same period last year, with 95% of those registrations occurring online. The number of permitted uses at PRCF facilities, we're starting to see this level out a little bit as we transition several of our sports, the sports fields to booking and scheduling by Mesa Public Schools. Those have started to come off of our accounts, and now we're starting to see those level out, but you can also see the seasonality from Ramada rentals and facility rentals of where those go based on weather conditions as well.
Mark, I have a question. Can you remind us how many hours a week that you cannot fill requests for our parks and lighted fields?
For sports fields, for the community use sports groups, right now we are, on average, not able to fulfill about 1,000 hours a week of practice times for the various groups that have requested those facilities.
And what type of programming would they like?
That's anything from soccer to baseball to lacrosse to flag football to tackle football to, we've had requests for cricket, Aussie Rules football, keep going.
Okay.
Ultimate Frisbee.
So are we, we're not going to utilize Riverview any longer? Is that out of the picture?
Correct. We have been told following spring training, that was our programming for, that ended in February at that site, that was the end of those facilities.
Okay, so no more playground or sports there?
Well, the playground will continue to exist.
Well, the sports program?
The sports programs on the multipurpose fields, those will be turned over as that development agreement continues to work its way to council for the union project.
All right, thank you.
Wanted to give a recognition to our park rangers. With only seven of them, seven of them on staff, we've been able to add a few over the last couple of years through different budget programs. But when they're out there and they're present, and we've been able to, with that addition of staff, to rearrange their schedules, you can see that our vandalism costs go down because of their presence and just being active on site. So a mighty force of seven, but they do a great job out there interacting with the community and reminding patrons and visitors of park rules and being a presence out there for us. And we've also started adding programming through them too on environmental education efforts as well. Convention Center and Amphitheater, again, as you can see, we've talked about in the past, we continue to maintain about an 89% cost recovery of the direct costs that are associated with that facility. We've readjusted this year, this past year, with a dedicated position to sell the amphitheater and go out and bid and purchase on our own talent to add more events there. We've seen a tremendous increase in those, in the amount of events there. We've doubled from what we offered last year there, from moving from a rental facility to also having the ability to include our own acts as well in that space.
Okay.
Dobson Ranch Golf Course, the rounds by month you'll see continue to be consistent, and the seasonality adjustments there, we are down this year about 1,216 rounds to be exact year-to-date. Part of that is attributed to, in August, we were closed for nearly a week as we, because of the monsoons and the trees that came down and the cleanup, and in October, we were closed for an additional week to do stump removal for, and get heavy equipment on the, through the golf course while we were closed for reseeding. So we were down for two weeks between overseeding and cleanup of those trees that came down in the monsoons, and then the rest through December, January, February has been that wet winter that we experienced. experienced. We move into significant changes in our budget and adjustments in our budget. One of the things that council challenged Mr. Brady and staff with was looking at the golf course operations and how that's currently set up, knowing that we are at the end of our current contract with MJ Golf, who's been, which has been in place since 2006, expires May 31st of this year, is at the end of all its renewals. So we had to go out and do an RFP for services and operations. You've asked us, and as I mentioned, and challenged us, to look at how to reduce the city's expenses there and move from the loss that we've been experiencing into a neutral zone or area, and provide some reinvestment opportunities in the course. That current contract with MJ Golf, the concessionaire is responsible for pro shop management, lessons, food and beverage, while the city is responsible for course and facility Contract spells out, the current contract spells out that a percentage split on all revenue sources, including driving range, rental equipment, merchandise sales, green fees, food and beverage are divided through various percentages between the contractor and the city. Those have traditionally been about $3 million, historically, right around the $3 million mark. When you take all those splits out, the revenue to the city has remained consistent at $1.6 million annually. And over the last four fiscal years, expenses have ranged from $1.9 to $2.5 million, depending on the repairs, investment that needs to occur on the course. The current forecast, that budget that Brian Richel shared with you in the budget kickoff, shows the current forecast estimates, a loss to the city of $684,000 in fiscal year 19, and from fiscal year 20 to '23, a combined loss of $3.8 million. On November 7th, we issued an RFP for management and operations of the Dobson Ranch Golf Course. We sought vendors who could provide course and facility maintenance, the pro shop management, the lesson management, the food and beverage operations, and then also submit a plan for reinvestment in the course and its facilities. We received seven responses from qualified vendors. Two finalists were ultimately selected to present to city staff and stakeholders. And following that review, we are recommending a word of contract to Paradigm Golf Group. They have extensive experience in the golf course operations, maintenance and construction. They've been in, around since 1987, have provided services from neighborhood courses to upscale courses. The Paradigm principals will be involved in the daily operations. The chief operating officer, Joe Dahlstrom, who's here today, is, lives within three miles of the course and plans on officing out of Dobson Ranch. The chief executive officer, Mike Abey, is based in Southern California and also plans to be on the course on a regular basis. They currently manage one course in Hawaii, one in California, one in Nevada, and three in Florida. They've made a commitment as a, made a decision as a company to focus on a limited number of courses to manage so that they can remain focused on their commitment to quality and service and product. The initial contract term that we've worked out with Paradigm is for 10 years with an option of two five-year renewals. They will take on all maintenance, operations, staffing, and programming of the course, and in return, they will be funding an annual capital investment of $250,000 for years 20 to '24, $300,000 for years 20, '25 to '29, which totals $2.75 million during the initial 10-year term. An additional annual funding of 3% of gross annual revenue to fund maintenance and repairs over that time period, first 10-year period is forecast to be $1.125 million. So a total contribution towards maintenance and capital improvements estimated at $3,875,000 during the initial 10-year term. This contract is recommended for council approval and is scheduled for the May 6 council meeting.
Mark, I have a question. If you were to rate our golf course, Dobson Golf Course, on a 1 to 10 scale, to transfer this over to the other ownership, how would you rate our golf course and, over to them? What's the current condition, do you think, on a scale of 1 to 10?
It's a, it's a great facility. It's still in good shape, rave reviews, but it's also an aging facility as well that needs some capital investment into that, into the course. The irrigation system, for example, is 20 years old. The restaurant is the original Dobson House and hasn't seen much improvement over the years and needs just some TLC. So the cart paths are in need of some repair, not all of them, but over time, those continue to crack and fail and need some repairs as well. Greens and bunkers need renovations. Those haven't seen renovations in several years.
So we'd rate it like a 7, 8 out of 10, or 9 out of 10?
From, you know, most municipal courses in the valley right now, I would say ours is right around probably an 8. One of the things that all of the vendors, when they came and spoke to us and they, and through their RFPs, they mentioned is, one of the things that was refreshing through the process was the opportunity to take on a course that was in good shape, as opposed to usually when they're take, asked to come in and manage courses or go through that process, they're in disrepair, need a lot of irrigation systems aren't even working. So the fairways and the greens have burned up from the sun and need to go back and do total reestablishment. So all of them were excited to have the opportunity to take on a facility of Dobson Ranch, like Dobson Ranch, that's in the condition that it is in. And that's a testament to the staff out there that have continued to maintain, that are focused and dedicated to making sure it continues to be a great golf course for the users.
Well, I guess one of my last follow-up questions is, I just didn't want the Paradigm come back and say, hey, we need to renegotiate the contract to add more money for capital repairs and things like that. So they're taking on all the current risks from this point moving forward?
Vice Mayor, so we have shared, Paradigm has been on site multiple times to review the course. We've shared that with them our estimated, what we see as the capital needs. And any of the capital improvements that we mentioned in there, that $3.8 million before it's spent needs to be approved by the city and will be mutually agreed upon so that we're continuing to be a partner in this process with them.
Councilmember Heredia.
Yeah, and that was my point, as far as, we still maintain ownership, right, as far as working with, with the vendor and trying to streamline these operations for the city as you outlined. Also, rate structures are based on council approval as well. Just want to clarify those pieces as well.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, yes, you are absolutely correct. The city will continue to retain total ownership of the property. Paradigm's just going in to operate and maintain the course. Set to city standards, so the same standards that we've set for golf maintenance, those are written into, for the course maintenance, are written into the contract. They have to maintain it the same way. Those improvements, as I mentioned, will be, have to be submitted to the city, agreed upon mutually before any of those projects can move forward. And yes, council, any changes to the fee structure would need to be, go through our fees and charges process on an annual basis. And Paradigm is aware of, as were all the vendors, aware of the current council-approved fee ranges, and felt they were comfortable working within those approved ranges.
Councilmember Duff.
Are the fee ranges that you're speaking of, are there just play costs, or is that amenity, like if you want the golf cart or what? I'm not a golfer, but I know there's additional costs. I mean, are we controlling all or just, you know, the play cost?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, so the fees that are in there include cart fees, walking fees, rental equipment fees. The only thing that we have, that are not approved are the restaurant, the food and concession cost fees and merchandise sales, ball machine costs, driving range fees, usage of the course itself are, through the council fees and charges process. Food and beverage, merchandise are not.
And is the, are you anticipating to keep those the same, or is there any speculation about where we need to go with that?
Paradigm has said initially, they are comfortable working within those ranges. One thing that they have asked is the ability to charge resident, non-resident, Mesa resident, Maricopa resident rate, or non-Mesa resident, and a visitor rate. So we've told them we would continue to work with those through that process, through, on the next cycle of fees and charges. They understand that can't be implemented immediately. It would have to go through the fees and charges process and that discussion with you all next year.
And is that a standard practice among municipal courses, is resident, non-resident?
It is, yes. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, that is a traditional practice from the, even, you know, we do that at a lot of our facilities.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Got one question. Where do we come up with the 3% of gross annual revenue to fund maintenance and repairs? How was that number calculated?
The, after, so that number, whatever fees are collected, on the total revenues from the course, from food and beverage to operations, et cetera, 3% off the top before any other money is doled out, we'll go straight towards those to fund those repairs and maintenance. And Vice Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, one of the things that we asked all the vendors to do that submitted was propose different structures of how to provide this, and this was the recommendation that Paradigm came up with. And through their forecasts, they, showing traditionally, we've shared with them our expenses over the, over time of what that looks like, and their estimates of what they think the cost will be to make some of those improvements. And they were comfortable with the 3% based on their forecast that that would fund the ongoing maintenance and repairs.
So that was through the RFP process, different vendors just submitted different numbers, and you guys had the opportunity to review that?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, that's correct.
Thanks, Mark.
To you.
Other changes, as we mentioned, the monsoons, we have requested additional funding to support cemetery landscape renovation. In addition, I want to mention that we are working with Vice Mayor Freeman and the Foundation for Mesa Parks and Recreation, putting the final pieces together on a marketing campaign to allow people, where there's been significant interest from the community about donating to help us replant those trees. So we've crafted a plan that we think will work to help us replant those strategically, to provide us better turf growth as well and going in and making some improvements to the landscape system, or, excuse me, the irrigation system as well to help that. So that's one of them. In addition to the Smart City Initiative, one of the things we've been working with, Travis and the IT staff, is looking, how do we do a better job of focusing on our data and tracking better? And one of those, one of the biggest needs we identified was a geographic information system specialist embedded within the department itself to help us map all of our facilities accurately and get all those amenities added so that we can further develop our data collection points and plan. Also, just wanted to point out, Mr. Boucher mentioned it last week during his presentation, the automated building energy management systems. He mentioned a couple of projects that we did last year, and he focused on the rebates from the, that we received from SRP. But at the, at the East Mesa Service Center and Red Mountain Library, there was an 18% reduction in energy at the East Mesa Service Center, a 16% reduction in energy costs at the Red Mountain Library, prior to us going in and updating the HVAC system. Once we did that, the overall energy savings have been coming in at more than 20% reduction. We're going to continue that project. I think Councilmember Whitaker asked if that was going to continue with our next, we just completed installation of an energy management system at the CK Luster Building. So we'll see where those numbers go in the summer months as that comes on. And that was also part of a total replacement of the HVAC system there as well. And then we're also getting ready to start implementation of an energy management system at the Mesa City Plaza as well.
Question, Mark, here, Councilmember.
Mark, are you also including the Multi Generation Center? Because they have solar panels as well.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, that, we, we're in the process also going through the HVAC renovation there as well. And part of that plan includes the installation of an energy management system as well. That's a total replacement of the HVAC system at that facility that'll start over the summer months here. Financial summary for the department. Our proposed budget for 1920 remains consistent with 1819 and our current budget. We don't see any significant changes. The one reduction there that you see is a million-dollar carryover that, at the Convention Center and Amphitheater. Those are those CVB dollars, the reinvestment opportunity dollars. They just are not included in the forecast, but are in the estimate for year-end 1819. With that, be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Councilmember Duff?
Yes, I have one question. On the Eagles Community Center, can you give us an update on the completion of that? I have a lot of inquiries about that, so we can.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, Beth, are you still here on Eagles? We have been working with the, as you all recall, we had to terminate the current contract out there for incompletion of that project. Engineering staff was, been working with the bonding company who remobilized the construction activities two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, and they are on-site daily now, making the improvements and corrections from the pieces that weren't completed. One of the issues that we had at that site was a, the turf didn't grow in. The minute we, as soon as we hydroseeded those fields last summer, we had a major monsoon that washed the hydroseed out. So it was, while it was a good test for the basins and make sure the flow worked the right way, it was not a good way to grow grass in. So that set us back right away, and we did not get a good grow in. So our intention was always to keep the fields closed until August, and then the park improvements following shortly behind. So I believe the current schedule shows us on track for that late August, fields early August, the rest of the park late August, early September.
Yes, I spoke with my staff yesterday about this project. They have mowed it down, if you've been by it lately. One of the issues, as Mark mentioned, was the turf establishment. We also have issues with the way they put the irrigation system in, which is real critical to the turf establishment. Right now, my staff's very pleased with where they are with getting, going through the irrigation system, working through it. They've mowed the grass down. We've got a plan for how they wish to reestablish the grass. There are other things that need to be done on-site. There are some slopes that are incorrect, some other things that I could go into a very long list. We are currently looking at having the grass ready to begin its establishment period at the end of May, with the intent to reopen in August, as Mark mentioned.
Good. Look forward to that. And one last shout out. For our parks, whatever we can do on shade, I know that creates additional costs for others, trees or canvases and stuff. Shade is in need. So, thank you.
Councilmember.
Yeah, Mark, are the usage on the outside, the, where grass, where you have grass, I see you all pop up fences for T-ball use and all these, all these other sports. I spend a lot of evenings with my sons and playing flat football, soccer, and baseball now. But I see those, those uses of, outside the baseball fields where we pop up fences. Are those permitted uses, or are those just convenience for people to use, or how do you manage those pieces?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, some of those are permitted. Some of them are, we hear about after the fact that it's happened. Quite honestly, that, I mean, and, you know, that's the hardest part to schedule for. The T-balls and those groups, those little, and the younger soccer, you know, they're usually in neighborhood parks and basins and finding any place they can play to practice as the older kids need the fields. So, some are permitted. Countryside Park is an example where we, we put up portables to fulfill the little league needs. Again, and then others are, just pop up randomly throughout the seasons.
All right. Mr. Brady.
Vice Mayor, I just want to make sure I point out to the council, because I think in light of certain issues that are coming before council or the community, you, I think we need to disclose to the council that, and even though Mark is presenting it to us today, there are a variety of issues related to Parks and Recreation that are funded out of the enterprise fund, and that could be severely impacted by future actions. So what's included in the Parks Fund that's related to, that's specifically the enterprise fund would be the golf course, would be the Convention Center, and would be our long-term contractual obligations to spring training, both to the Cubs and to the A's. Both of those, all of those are inside the enterprise fund. So both the collection of revenues, but all ex- So both the collection of revenues, but all expenses are also included in the enterprise fund. So just want to make sure you understand that distinction. I don't, did I miss any others that we covered today? Okay, I think those are, making sure everybody is aware of that.
Thank you. I think that, you know, denotes the quality of life we have here in Mesa, having lived here for many years. I just enjoy our park system and everything. I grew up doing sports here in the, in our park system, so I appreciate all you do. It's, it's a constant battle, some heavy lifting. With that, I just want to move back to the cemetery. It's kind of a special part to be, and thank you for leveraging, leveraging some of the foundation use, because I've had a lot of people reach out. You know, we're one of the few city-owned cemeteries, as you know, and we operate in the black, so that's a good thing. Self-sustaining cemetery, and we're, we enjoy a lot of amenities there. So with that, you know, I was going back some historical documents, and obviously that cemetery was purchased, that ground in 1895 or 1896, and moved from university and center down to its current location, without any water rights. Typically, there were no grandfathered water rights to that. So thank you again for working out intergovernmental agreements with SRP, how do we get water to that and keep it nice and green. But it's very well-operated and maintained, and I appreciate Rick and the team that you have there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I share that with them.
Is there any other questions from staff? Mayor, are you still with us? Do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mark. Amen.
All right, well, enjoy wherever you're at.
Yeah.
So with that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Mickelson, I have one blue card, or are there any others? Okay. So thank you, Mark. We have a blue card from Mr. Tom Anderson. Mr. Anderson, if you're still here, would you come, you'll have three minutes, and give us your address, and thank you, sir.
Anywhere here? I actually wasn't aware that I could speak at this today, so. For the record, my name is Tom Anderson. I represent the nearly 250-member, 50 club at Dobson Ranch Golf Course. I previously served in the board of the over 260-member Dobson Ranch Golf Association for over 20 years and as president for nine of those years. This is what you have. Per the city of Mesa in late 2018, Dobson Ranch has received numerous accolades in recent years, including best municipal golf course in Arizona by Golf Digest, best public golf course in Phoenix by New Times, and top-rated golf course in the East Valley by the East Valley Tribune. Dobson Ranch was ranked in the top five by Abbott-Golf Arizona Magazine for best overall golf course value-priced received, four out of five stars from Golf Digest for best places to play. You have a golf course with no debt service on the property, water costs of around $30,000 a year per Mr. Hirschberg, which are likely the lowest in the state, perhaps, and 60,000 rounds per year. These are the city's numbers. You have our 260-member Dobson Ranch Golf Association. You have a 250-member, 50 club at Dobson Ranch for members over 50 years of age. You have an 80-woman Dobson Ranch Women's Golf Association that plays during the weekdays. Please understand, I cannot find a public golf facility in this state with one club over 200 members. As a point of reference, in 2017 and 2018, 50 club alone wrote checks in each of those years in excess of $140,000 for green fees, gift certificates, and a small portion of special events at the Pro Shop or Dobson's Restaurant. I am confident the DRJ did the same, and the DRWDJ, Women's Golf Association was also a significant contributor to this cash flow. It is also important to note these figures do not include personal membership, purchases of golf carts, range balls, merchandise, food and beverage, both during our events and other times as well. Our membership has always been committed to supporting these facilities. This is both on tournament days as well as on days we do not have sponsored events. Per the city of Mesa in late 2018, as part of the RFP process, revenue came in around $3 million with expenses of around $2 million. I believe that we should talk, I believe what we should be talking about today is the absolute success of the current Mesa model for public golf, but that's not the discussion. What we are talking about is a new model that is far different and has been, in fact, been used by nearby municipalities with no documented success. Many of those players, particularly from Phoenix, Tempe, and Gilbert, hang their hat at Dobson now. That's why our clubs are so much larger than the others. They've come down to play here. For over 40 of years, for over 40 years, city of Mesa has maintained the Dobson Ranch Golf Course while qualified vendors manage the pro shop and restaurant. A drastic change of course down intends to award one contractor, one contract to an out-of-state corporate entity, which now includes for the first time that a single vendor manages all aspects of golf, including maintenance. I and many others fear that this will have a negative impact on the atmosphere and culture at Dobson Ranch Golf Course and make, perhaps make it less affordable, or perhaps unaffordable to many. For the rec, oh, I'm sorry, I read that.
Mr. Anderson, your time's up, if you want to finish up?
Okay. In the end, what is the goal of Parks and Recreation Department in a city such as Mesa? My assumption would be that it strives to supply high-quality parks, pools, fishing holes, bike paths, hiking trails, skate parks, dog parks, and perhaps even golf courses at the lowest possible cost to the citizenship. I believe if the accounting was clearly stated, this golf course must turn a profit and then has therefore not a cost. Our hope is that you will view this golfing community in the same way that you view users of other facilities that are subsidized and generate no real income. In the end, this topic now dominates the conversation within all clubs. To be clear, the vast majority of members are very concerned that the atmosphere that brought all of us here may be irreparably changed once this new model takes effect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. No other blue cards? So with that, council, any discussion on meetings or anything attended, any conferences? Councilmember Duff?
Yes.
You've been pretty busy, I know.
I think we all have. But on Saturday, in conjunction with Mesa PD, we had an Easter egg hunt at Reed Park, and there was over 4,000 eggs stuffed by Mesa PD with candy. They were also out there with displays and cooking hot dogs, about 600 people in attendance. A wonderful, wonderful community event. Mesa Fire stopped by and participated, and as well as the Easter Bunny was there. It's a fabulous event, and thank you Mesa PD for making this a very great event for the community, especially around Reed Park, something that I know we'll look forward to doing every year and engaging that community. We've done some other things, I just have to look at my calendar just real quick. Go ahead.
So we want to congratulate some of our Mesa Police Department personnel for some of the promotions. A few of us were there to celebrate the promotions over at the public safety facility, so I certainly want to congratulate those. And then I had an opportunity to read to preschoolers over at the library at the Red Mountain Branch, and that's always fun to read to, these little squirmy kids, but it was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Go ahead. I hugged the microphone, remember?
For sure, yeah. So Vice Mayor and myself hosted a town hall. This is our second one that we did, looking at West Mesa. Councilwoman Duff was there, many of the staff, directors, we appreciate staff and folks there that came out to hear an update what's happening in West Mesa, so we appreciate everybody that attended and received, you know, I hope useful information to what's the developing parts of our city here in West Mesa. So thanks, West Mayor, for your leadership on that end.
Thank you very much. I had a great time, and I want to thank our staff, our council assistants, because they really, you know, do a bang-up job, because there's, there's a lot of work involved in reaching out. The other thing, I was able to participate with the homeless outreach yesterday at the old Brown and Brown property, and I got to ride with officers and did outreach to those in the community, and we went as far to Riverview Park. And so it was nice to ride with an officer, get his perspective, and then as well as just dig in the weeds. So appreciate their efforts. There were a lot of the nonprofits there, other organizations, and it was a well-attended event. So I know Councilmember Duff was there, and it was a great opportunity to show compassion to those in our community. With that, is there anything else? Well, thanks for letting me fill in for the mayor. Mayor, thank you. I got this off my bucket list. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Brady?
Oh, Mr. Brady, that's right, thank you. Mr. Brady, it's time to yours.
Yeah, just quickly, remind you about the next study session will be a week from today, Thursday, May 2nd, at 7:30. And then coming up, not this weekend, the following weekend, Councilmember Heredia, correct? We have the Rhodes Aquatic Center Blast? What are we calling it?
Spring Blast.
Spring Blast, sorry, Spring Blast. So that'll be from 11 to 2. So we'll talk more about that, but that's coming up in, I'll guess, one week from this Saturday, so, thank you.
All right. Nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Luna?
Someone?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, we're done.